May 10, 2022, meeting of the Planning Commission. And we'd like to stand for a flag salute, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to... It's in time for a roll call. Jessica?
Chair Barbe.
Present.
Commissioner Barber.
Present.
Commissioner Dome.
Present.
Commissioner McCarroll.
Present.
Commissioner Paul.
Yes, present.
Commissioner Spear. And Commissioner Wyler.
Here.
Okay, a very warm welcome to our new commissioners. It's great to have you onboard. We look forward to hearing more of you and about you in the future. And at this time, I'd like to ask if there are any comments or questions on the minutes of the last meeting for those of us who were here. Hearing no comments, make a motion to approve the minutes.
Sure, move approval.
Second.
Second.
Chair Barbe.
Approved.
Commissioner Barber. Commissioner Dome.
Approve.
Commissioner McCarroll.
Approve.
Commissioner Paul.
Yes, approve.
Commissioner Spear.
Abstained.
Commissioner Wyler.
Yes.
Okay, the vote is five to zero to approve with two abstained.
Thank you. Just a note to folks to remember to press your mic button when you want to speak, and please speak clearly because this is being recorded for posterity. And so it's important to use your mic right next to you. All right. Written communications?
Chair Barbe, there were two pieces of written communication received, both related to item H1. One was from Laura Hunter on behalf of the North County Group of the Sierra Club. The other one was from the offices of Mitchell M. Si, Attorney at Law, on behalf of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. And those were both emailed to the commissioners in advance of the meeting tonight.
All right. Oral communications? That was...
Yeah, we do have one for Agenda Item H1.
Okay, so we'll hold on that until we actually get to the Agenda Item. We have no public hearings this evening. Current business, 2021 to 2029 general plan housing element update. Ms. Maronis.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Chair Barbe, my name is Veronica Maronis, Senior Planner, and I am presenting item H1 to you this evening, which is the draft revisions to the sixth cycle housing element update. So before we move into what those draft revisions entail, I just want to cover some background, since I know we have some new commissioners this evening, on the city's sixth cycle housing element. So for context, a jurisdiction must update their housing element every eight years. Housing elements and the eight-year cycles are mandated by the state. And the current cycle is the sixth cycle for the planning period 2021 through 2029. The State Department of Housing and Community Development is the agency that oversees and approves or certifies housing elements. They are commonly referred to as HCD. And the city began work on the housing element update in 2020 through the Housing and Community Investment Study work effort. The work effort entailed two additional items, the East Valley Specific Plan, which is still in process, and the Residential Sector Feasibility Study, which was completed in June of last year. On July 27, 2021, a draft of the sixth cycle housing element was presented before the Planning Commission, where the Commission voted to recommend approval to the City Council for adoption. And on August 11 of 2021, the City Council adopted the draft sixth cycle housing element document. However, approximately 24 hours before that adoption, the city received an outstanding comment letter from HCD on that draft document. Those comments received from HCD are detailed under Attachment 1 of your staff report. So when and why do we update the housing element? Again, just for some additional background, so we update our housing element again on eight-year cycles, and we're currently working on our housing element for the sixth cycle. And the deadline for jurisdictions within the Sandag region was April 15, 2021. However, HCD does allow for a 120-day grace period, if you will, to adopt the housing element, which was August 13, 2021. And as I previously mentioned, we adopted August 11, 2021. The reason to update our housing element is to really refine policies and programs to make sure they're relevant, that they comply with state laws, and to accommodate jurisdictions' fair share of regional housing needs, which is referred to as RENA. And in the case of the sixth cycle housing element, there are really a myriad of housing element laws that were approved during the fifth cycle that we then had to take into account for the sixth cycle update. So the current iteration of the sixth cycle housing element contains the contents listed on this slide, and there have been no changes to this format or layout. So the same chapters and the same appendices are still provided. The draft revisions to this current iteration are, again, outlined in your staff report in Table 1. And the comment letters that are referenced are included in Attachment 1 with response to comments. And so I'm going to be providing a high-level overview of those comments and the responses and what that translates into those draft revisions. So we're going to begin with HCD's comments. So again, on August 10, we received a letter that had two overarching comments from HCD. The first comment consists of multiple subcomments related to affirmatively furthering fair housing, which is often referred to as AFFH, and that's how I'll be referring to it, specifically on incorporating local data and knowledge through community participation, consultation with stakeholders, and people's lived experiences in the city. It also touched on other relevant factors related to AFFH, such as housing mobility, place-based strategies, and displacement risks. So in response to comment number one, staff met with those who provided written comments pertaining to AFFH, as detailed in Attachment 1, that was four different groups that staff met with. And as a result, we discussed concerns, goals of what their comments really detailed, and tried to come to a... Some sort of, right, we really attempted to work with these groups to ensure we incorporated as much as possible based on direction that we have received, staff has received, from our decision-makers. And so staff revised Programs 3.2 and 3.4 and created a new program, 2.10. And so we also updated language to Appendix E to include information on that local data and knowledge, as well as local... Excuse me, local data and knowledge, and fine-tuned really Program 3.4, which has the revised language, but that's probably the most fleshed-out changes to our programs, and that is our fair housing program. So HCD's second comment relates to the suitable sites inventory, specifically with regard to suitability of non-vacant sites and small sites. So HCD requested clarification and reassessment of the methodology that was used for assessing non-vacant sites identified for residential development. And they also requested revisions on small site development within the city, such as incentivization that facilitates such development and monitoring. So in response to this comment, the methods for identifying suitable non-vacant sites were updated and clarified. Site modifications to building age, the building age variable, and clarification on the net new unit variable were also provided. And additional site eligibility prioritization and substantiation was also included, based on criteria such as proximity to transit, proximity to services, employment, community facilities, as well as a number of other factors. Overall, as a result of this updated methodology, the total RENA site inventory has increased by 800 units. And the analysis adjusted the assumed density value for sites outside the proposed East Valley Specific Plan area as part of those revisions, which is how there was an 800-site... Excuse me, 800-unit increase. And as a result of this specific comment, comment number two, City, staff also revised Program 1.5. So part of HCD's overarching comments included lived experiences from our public participation efforts and to defer to sources of local data and knowledge. And so, as I mentioned previously, staff met with public commenters who had comments related to AFFH, and we provided written responses and made substantive changes based on their input. So the attachment... I'm sorry, Table number one of your staff report outlines which comment letter found in Attachment 1 was the impetus for the change listed, and then that page number for that change. So in response to these comments, again, staff revised Table 45. We had a public commenter who requested we evaluate all North County cities on the state Route 78 corridor, not just full-service cities, so that information is updated. We also revised Programs 1.4, 1.8, 2.1, and added a new program, 2.9, to discuss inclusionary housing. And a new housing policy, 1.11, was added as well. And so with the... As you'll... As you may have seen in the public comment letters, there's still a request for an inclusionary housing ordinance. Program 2.9 is an inclusionary housing assessment. As I mentioned, there was a residential sector feasibility study conducted during the... or as part of the Housing and Community Investment Program. And so that study essentially substantiates that it's not economically feasible at this time for a certain type of inclusionary mechanism for certain unit types, residential unit types. And so that is what is built into Program 2.9, which is to conduct another assessment, because these assessments are snapshots in time, to ensure that inclusionary housing is not left off the table in our sixth cycle planning period. So next steps. This meeting is really meant to serve as a public forum for public participation, as well as to obviously inform our decision-makers of those proposed draft revisions. The city is voluntarily having a 30-day review period, public review period, for these draft changes. That's not a requirement. That is something we are doing to ensure the public has ample time to review these draft revisions. That public period started May 3 and would conclude on June 2. And subsequently, staff would submit the draft revisions to HCD for their review. State law requires that HCD review or have that draft revision for 60 days before a jurisdiction can adopt those changes. So the soonest or the earliest timeframe that we could bring these draft revisions to council for adoption would be sometime in August. Obviously, if HCD comes back and says there's still some outstanding items, we don't want to necessarily adopt another version of a document that HCD doesn't want to certify, so we would be working with HCD to ensure we move forward with review and revisions accordingly. And that concludes staff's presentation. I am available for questions.
Thank you so much. Maybe we'll hear the speaker first.
Okay, Mr. George Vieramontes.
Oh, there it is, okay. Chair, Commissioners, good afternoon. How are you? Good evening. My name is Jorge Vieramontes. I represent... I'm a representative for the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. I live in the local area and live and work and recreate in the vicinity of this project. I believe that I will be impacted by the environmental impacts of this project. The city should require the project to be built utilizing a local and skilled-trained workforce. Local hire and skilled and trained workforce requirements reduce construction-related environmental impacts while benefiting the local economy. In a recent 2020 report titled "Putting California on the High Road: A Jobs and Climate Action Plan," board concluded that investments in growing, diversifying, and upskilling California's workforce can positively affect returns on climate mitigation efforts. Moreover, just this year, the South Coast Air Quality Management District found that the use of a local state-certified apprenticeship program or a skilled and trained workforce with a local hire component can result in air pollutant reductions. Other cities have not hesitated to apply skilled and trained workforce requirements for private development projects in their city. Local skilled and trained workforce requirements can boost economic development and mitigate transportation and greenhouse gas impacts minimizing vehicle miles driven. Commissioners, thank you for your time tonight, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking. Comments, questions from the commissioners about the update? Commissioner Barber.
I have a simple question. Do you have a timeline? And do you think staff is going to be able to return to the Planning Commission or the council addressing inclusionary housing?
So at this point in time, we are hopefully at the tail end of our housing element update. This process began in 2020 with the Sandag region's deadline by the state being April 15, 2021. We've already gone through two rounds of review with HCD, and so when we submit these draft revisions, that will be a third round of review, where they are reviewing the document based on direction that staff's received. And the Residential Sector Feasibility Study substantiates that an inclusionary housing ordinance at this time isn't feasible based on those metrics within the residential study. So again, the assessment, Program 2.9, is really meant to continue the discussion of inclusionary housing for the planning period. And the timeline for submittal, as mentioned, would be as soon as this 30-day public review period ends, and then we would submit to HCD, and they have at least 60 days to review before we could act on the draft document.
You for clarifying.
And just to follow up on that, so... Because you mentioned you'll take it to City Council. It'll also come back to us before it goes to City Council, or no?
I would imagine we would take it yes to Planning Commission for your recommendation to City Council.
That's right. That's what I thought. I just wanted to confirm that. Other questions, comments?
I do, Chair.
Commissioner Dome.
Thank you. I want to follow up with the question regarding inclusionary housing. You stated that the second phase is completed in 2021, so there is no other communication or any other assessment that would take a look into the inclusion housing. Is that what you... Is that correct, if I understood correctly?
So at this time, there's nothing that would require us to do another study to assess inclusionary housing as an option within our city. However, Program 2.9, which is part of these draft revisions, would require that. It would require the city to reevaluate at a certain triggering point whether inclusionary is feasible.
So my question here is that when that assessment was conducted or during that whole assessment process, did we give the public an opportunity to kind of review and provide comments? Because that is one of the requirements from the HCD, requesting that the engagement of the public to provide inputs for those information.
So that document was... It's really a statistical factual document that doesn't have any necessarily policy information. It's really, here's the data. The document was presented to the public in a public forum, as well as to the... In this forum, I should say, in the Planning Commission at a public meeting sometime, I think it was in May or June last year. And then also to our housing subcommittee of the City Council. So it has been made available. There was not any specific request for input on it based on the type of information that was intended to be presented and obtained from it.
Other questions? Commissioner Paul.
Yes, hi. I just had two things I want to talk about. You talked about changes to 2.9, and you added 2.10. And to me, it looks like that those changes have added thousands of dollars per year to the cost of the program, maybe tens of thousands of dollars. And I don't know that that's a question. I think that's a fair observation that I noticed. And then my second point I wanted to talk about was the feasibility study that's been mentioned a couple times. You... In your response to some of the comment letters, in here, a couple of times, you say that the study concludes. But the study has... The study does not have a conclusion. And, you know, Adams mentioned that this study is a technical report. But we, as far as I know, we have not had a public hearing, and we... The Planning Commission or the City Council have concluded the results of that study. And those are just my two comments. Thank you.
Just to clarify on staff's point, that Program 2.9 is a new program, so it is... It was not something in the previous adopted document. And I guess to speak to the point about costs associated with that, the state of California has, of course, declared a housing crisis within the state, and there is a substantial amount of funding that is floating around. And in order to qualify for a lot of it, you have to have a compliant housing element. But, for example, that is how we were able to fund the Housing and Community Investment Study work effort, was through funding from the state. So it is anticipated that at that point in time, if we broach 2.9, Program 2.9, and it ends up in the certified compliant document, theoretically, there would be funding for that that we would apply for.
And I can speak to the issue with regard to the sector feasibility study. It is... It was a technical study used to inform other information... Or other documents. So it was used to inform the housing element and the East Valley Specific Plan in much the same manner as a stormwater report would be used to inform a grading plan and design. So it really isn't anything that we would have expected to have any type of necessary determinations or results from. It's just, it lays out the X, Y, and Z.
Okay, but staff report says that there's a conclusion reached. There is no conclusion.
But the report concludes that certain housing... Certain affordability levels would or would not work based on requiring a inclusionary number.
So I have the document here. If you can tell me what page that's on.
I don't have it in front of me. I couldn't even begin to tell you without that.
Then I'd say that there's no conclusion in this document. And you could show it to me, but if you can't show it to me, I'm going to repeat that there is no conclusion.
After the meeting, if I have a chance, I can look through it, and we can discuss.
Okay.
And to clarify, staff wasn't a... I guess the intention of that statement isn't to claim that there is a conclusion written in that document, as in there is an executive summary written in that document. But the study does provide empirical data that land value and economic feasibility of development for certain residential types would not likely be yielded as a result of an inclusionary mechanism at certain percent values because of the economics... Economic feasibility of the land value rate... Land value of... Residual land value of the property.
Yes, I agree. It does imply that certain housing types are not feasible. It doesn't say that no housing type is feasible, and it doesn't say an inclusionary housing program is not feasible.
I agree with that, with that statement.
And that also points to the fact that you, going forward, you're including more time and opportunity, I assume, for... To continue that conversation and discussion to see if... Because that study did not actually include all of the mechanisms, as you stated in your going-forward document, all the mechanisms that they might have looked at for that study, so that the technical report, in my mind, could have been perhaps a little bit broader and relied on alternative strategies and methodologies that were not discussed.
And so Program 2.9 would expand on those?
Right.
And it would also require education, right, to decision-makers as well on inclusionary housing? I'm sorry, Mr. Spear. Commissioner Spear.
Site inventory... No.
Better? I think that it's working now.
I have a question on site inventory. I was looking at the numbers of what was shown in the housing element, and it looked to me like above moderate comes in at 6% of the inventory, moderate comes in at 5%, and lower comes in at 89%. If that's true, that compares to the RENA numbers of above moderate at 52 compared to 6, moderate 16 compared to 5, and the lower at 32 compared to 89. So if those disparities are accurate or close to accurate, I guess my question is, is how are we... What policies are we implementing or have we implemented to try to correct that, since that's our target from RENA?
Just to clarify, Commissioner Spear, are you referring to a certain table or page within the draft document?
Yeah, in the appendix, it shows a site inventory, and it gives a number of units for each of those parcel numbers. And then it categorizes each by the economic class as well. So summing those up, I then came up with percentages to see, okay, how are we doing compared with our target given to us? And the numbers look quite... Quite far off. So how are we... What are we implementing policy-wise in the housing element? What are our efforts to try to reach the target, since we... It looks currently like our inventory is way off.
Sure. So I think one thing to be noted about housing elements is that RENA is a requirement for planning and not a requirement for construction. Of course, we all want to construct more housing theoretically, but for the purposes of RENA, we have to plan. We have to show the state of California that we can plan for our allocated 9,600 units. And so part of how we do that is we utilize a density range. The state allocates or states that it's acceptable to use a density range to determine lower-income units. So as part of RENA, you're allocated, as Commissioner Spear noted, above moderate, moderate, low, very low income units. And so in order to do an assessment, to do this analysis, the state says for jurisdictions like Escondido, there are certain qualifications, we can utilize a parcel or a site that has 30 dwelling units per acre as its density, its allowed density, to qualify as low... Lower-income units. And so for the purposes of the housing element, we happen to have a lot of sites that are at that 30 dwelling units or higher density. Part of that is in line with our climate action plan and wanting to increase density in our urban infill areas. But as a result, when you aggregate all of those, they theoretically could have or qualify for our lower-income unit allocation. The housing element does describe that we do not necessarily... It's not a realistic... It's not feasible or realistic that all of those sites will be developed as lower-income. And so they do break it between above moderate and lower-income units for the purposes. Table 59 is probably the better... That breaks out the assessment or the analysis that our consultant team at the time prepared. But I understand where you're coming from on that. But there is some language in our housing element, and I'm happy to find that page and provide it to you after this meeting where it discusses that.
There was a question that came up in one of the... In the information we received regarding Page 97, I think it was. When I read the last paragraph of Page 97 of the element, it said... It talked about that allocation, the total number. And it said, hey, we're not going to hit this. Shortfall in the above moderate and moderate income household categories can be replaced with low-income sites. Now, I'm not... What I don't understand is Sandag came up with a calculation, and their calculation, one of them was based on the equity adjustment to try to align Escondido with the demographic makeup more indicative of San Diego County, because we're low. We're low on the high end, and we're high on the low end. So in that calculation, they applied factors to reduce and increase our allotments in different categories. But we seem to be doing the opposite. So if we do that, including that verbiage in that last paragraph of the element, seems to say we're going to disregard the priorities put in the Sandag allotment document, and we're going to create our own. So how... Is that what we're supposed to do?
So that's a great point, and I think what you're trending towards is affirmatively furthering fair housing plays very much into that, right? Because if you... As you spoke to Sandag's methodology, if you had a disproportionate amount or a higher amount of lower-income household income... Median household income than the county median, then you were allocated more above moderate, right, to try and balance it out. We don't want concentrations of poverty, essentially. We don't want to allocate low-income units. We don't want concentrations of poverty essentially. We don't want to allocate low income units disproportionately to areas that already have a lot of low income units. And so is that what we're doing on the city scale? And that's a great point. That was one of HCD's comments. And the comment letter we received was to bolster or, you know, how do we prevent exacerbating that as an issue? And so we, staff reformed Program 3.4, which is our fair housing program, to make it more place-based. So we emphasize and focus a lot of our programs now on our census tracts that have a high, are deemed as a high segregation and high poverty. Those are census tracts, I think, 202.13 and 202.14 as receiving priority on certain investments to create place-based improvements in tandem with further information and further research and assessment on displacement risk, tenant protections, things of that nature. And so the idea being that as we bring improvements to lower income parts of the city or parts of the city that have high segreg, rates of high segregation, we wanna ensure that those people don't get displaced and just result in gentrification essentially. So we have included strategies that the city is already implementing that weren't captured and improved upon them. So staff worked with our housing division to assess our fair housing providers, see what they are existingly, what are they providing, existing to the city, and improve upon those measures to prevent that from happening.
Does that speak to the existing housing supply and not the new housing supply, though?
That would speak to both theoretically.
So I guess part of my question is, what are we doing to encourage new development to meet this goal as opposed to redevelopment? And, and if we're at the point of designing and putting forth our, or finalizing, I guess, our housing element, does our housing element contain policies in it to try to at least moderate or come closer to reaching, if not the total numbers, our percentages?
So as far as what our programs are doing to incentivize development, that's a really great question. And I think I can go through our document and find that and provide that to you in offline. I think that's a pretty comprehensive question. But as far as, give me one second to think about, think about your.
Yeah, and, and I, I, that makes sense to me. That is a pretty comprehensive question. I wouldn't expect for that to be an off-the-cuff answer at all. I guess my question leading to that is, I'm looking at the deadline and us getting all this in, and I'm saying, is there more work that we should be doing prior to all that getting finalized?
Sure, and I think that's something where we would, well, defer to the city planner on that.
Sure. So basically, they're, I'll start by saying there's been an extraordinary amount of work put into the document to get where we are, both from our consultant Veronica Tam and Associates, who put together the first draft that was brought forth and entitled or approved by council upon recommendation of this commission. And then Veronica Morones here, our new senior planner, picked up that baton and ran with it. So there has been an extraordinary amount of work and outreach on the, on the document itself and on the programs and policies that are in there. Not having been the person intimately involved with all of those programs and policies, I can't give you specifics as far as this program. And just like Veronica said, this program does this, this does that. It is a much larger discussion. But the, the goal of the, of the element is really to be able to provide the housing that's needed for the community. And if it is determined that we need, based on the RENA numbers, we need X number of affordable housing units, that's what the intent was, is to create a framework that would allow those to be, to be constructed. Whether those are constructed or not is somewhat of a private market issue. There are a lot of, a lot of dollars out there for, for federal and state subsidies for affordable housing construction that would encourage it. And I'm sure that there are policies and programs in our document that, that encourage the city to work with developers, with affordable housing developers, nonprofits, et cetera, to get those units constructed. I don't think that there's really much need to try to encourage market rate construction, because that happens just by nature. But I think if, if I'm kind of, I'm hoping I'm getting at what you're asking for. If not, if you can clarify a little bit more.
Yeah, I, I look to see what room is left in Escondido. And that's part of my question is, is they say, Sandag's telling us, look, you gotta build a little bit of this, a little bit of this, and a lot of this. And I'm thinking, okay, do we have, number one, do we have the room to do that in Escondido? And so I looked to the site survey, and I say, well, what are we, what are we looking at in terms of our site inventory at least? Where does that, how do, how are we falling? And it looks abysmally short of that allocation. So then the next question is, well, how are we, how are we gonna get there?
Sure.
Do we have to encourage that with policy to try to say, yeah, we can leave it up to industry to say, we hope you build here? Or we can say, what can we do to invite them here so that we can try to get this going?
So a lot of the work that, and I guess I'll start by saying the way that the sites inventory is, is identified, there are enough sites out there that will accommodate the 9,600 and...
Seven.
Seven units. A lot of them are high-density sites in the core of the city. So along, in the downtown area, along East Valley Parkway and along South Center City Parkway. So those are areas that have that high density, that you can build the number of units at the affordable levels that are, that are called out for. The areas on the outside of town, those are the lower-density areas where you expect to see, you know, larger lot, single-family homes. And you're not gonna get a lot of bang for your buck as far as trying to get RENA numbers out there, right? But that's where you're gonna see a lot of the market rate development happening. There are other factors that encourage or discourage construction in certain areas. I think one of them is SB 743, SB or AB?
SB.
SB, thank you. It's the Senate bill that used a vehicle miles traveled threshold for, for determining impacts per SEQA for transportation. And what that basically did is it really encourages development in the inner areas of the city, in the central area, because you've got your, your uses out there. You're not gonna be requiring to, required to drive as far to get to certain uses in certain areas. And that dramatically reduces the cost of development, because then you do not have to provide mitigation and all sorts of other, other costs associated with offsetting that, those greenhouse gas emissions that come out of the additional miles traveled. So that's one, one avenue, and there are others, but that's the big one that I can point to immediately, that we can say, okay, SB 743 really drove that, is driving a lot of that density or a lot of the development into the higher dense, the more dense areas in the downtown and, and the, and those corridors that I mentioned. So there are programs. Some of them are city-sponsored or city-initiated, and, and there are some laid out, I'm sure, in the various programs and policies in our housing element. But some of them are also just driven by, driven by state and federal policy, too.
And just if I may add two things to that. One is that the city is utilizing a majority of non-vacant sites for our RENA sites inventory. So most of the sites in the city that are listed in our sites inventory are non-vacant, are not vacant. And so that's where those methodologies for the suitable sites analysis come in, related to building age, related to net new units, and related to, what was the third? Land to improvement value ratio. So those three factors, those three variables were used to determine what non-vacant sites would be best in addition to vacant sites that were more easily identified. And the other item, which perhaps our city planner can speak more to, just because he was present for it, and I did not work here yet, is that the East Valley Specific Plan was in tandem with our housing element when our Housing and Community Investment Study kicked off, and is the rezoning effort that is a partner to our housing element. But due to the environmental review that's required for that document, it split off, it bifurcated before I started, so maybe fall of last year. And that document as well contains a myriad of policies and objectives to reframe the East Valley Specific Plan area where a lot of our RENA units are found.
You said it.
So do the, the, the inventory right now, you said, I think that it contains both non-vacant and vacant sites. Is it not a comprehensive inventory in terms of saying, hey, this is the room we have left in Escondido? Would it not be then a comprehensive idea of what we've got? And you mentioned, for example, Adam, that, that, hey, we've got room downtown to, to do it all. We've got room to, to put the higher-end stuff and the lower-end stuff. Is that, because I, when I look at the numbers for the inventory, it doesn't pan out that way at all. So am I reading it wrong, or is it, are we talking about two different comprehensive lists here?
So it's one list. And unfortunately, fortunately, as housing element law has progressed and things have become more and more dire, and the state has declared more and more emergencies surrounding our, our housing crisis, housing element law has become far more stringent. And so what used to fly for a suitable sites inventory, which was, yeah, you could put housing there theoretically, is no longer allowed. So we cannot simply say every vacant site within the city, we can place housing on. In fact, we have to provide an analysis substantiating, or substantiating our claim of this suitability list. So that is what that methodology speaks to, is how we determined the sites on this list for both vacant and non-vacant properties. So for example, a, a piece of property that you or I may think is reasonable to see redeveloped for housing, because we know the idiosyncrasies of Escondido as residents, and know people don't go there, it's been vacant for a while, but maybe was developed or built only 10 years ago, would not necessarily fly for, or, or be acceptable for the sites inventory, because the fact that it was more recently developed can be seen as a constraint, right? What is the financial implication of the person or the entity that developed that property? So the 30-year age, the 30-year variable that is in our methodology assumes or, or predicates itself on this idea that more than likely loans have been paid back. So that site is more likely to have a new developer come in and redevelop it. So long story short, not every vacant site, not every site we may think is appropriate for housing may be on this list, because it underwent an analysis by our consultant team.
As a follow-up to that, doesn't this all fall back on the, on the general plan and what these sites are designated for? So in other words, our high density is our high density, low density is low density, and, and therefore whatever's vacant falls into each one of these? I, I, I don't know. It, it just seems that, and I don't know if it's HCD that's making this so difficult for us, but we fall right back to the general plan, and we do our analysis on the general plan, and, and our numbers fall out of that. And if our numbers are falling out such that we have way too much high density, but it creates more affordable housing, and if that's what the community wants, then maybe that's what we should be striving for, because ultimately what's gonna happen is the market is gonna do what the market does. And these other levels of affordability will likely get built as long as we have enough of the higher density to cover our affordable housing. That's kind of the way I look at it in, in a very simplistic manner. So it seems to me like because we've got a lot of high-density designated areas, we're gonna hit our affordable housing, we're gonna hit our RENA numbers, and then the market's gonna come in and hit these moderate income level units, just because that's what the market does. That's how I kind of look at this. And, and I think that the city has done a really good job in looking at the general plan and making these areas that need to be higher density in the center of the city, I think is a very good thing, because as you start going outside the city, you hit the VMT issue. And so you, you can't have high density sitting way on the outskirts of, of town. But if you look at state law, they're saying you gotta have a mix of high density everywhere. So there's, there's conflicting things that are going on here in, in, in my view of this. And I just think that with the way that the city has set their general plan and the specific plans that are coming about and our review, I think we're doing a really good job in getting the high-density designated areas closer to the center core. But we're gonna have a tough time with HCD if they're saying we've gotta have higher density further out from the, from the core, so we don't create a, oh, what did you call it? You used a term. A degradation of, of a certain neighborhood because it's high density? I don't know. I, it's, I, I have a tough time reading all of these various requirements that are coming out of the state and trying to, trying to make each city hit a, a certain requirement, when every city is a little bit different. And, and we still need to make sure that we do what we need to do for our city, which right now, we need to create some more housing at an affordable level. And, and I, I think we're doing that, because that's what it looks like on the table, because there's a predominance of that high density and those of more affordable units. Anyway, that's my two cents. It wasn't a question, by the way.
Thank you, Commissioner Wyler. Other thoughts, questions?
Oh, I did have actually one question.
There you go.
The, the extra 800 units that you had mentioned, where are they coming from, just a re-analysis of other sites?
So the methodology slightly changed. So for example, under the adopted draft of the housing element, we were utilizing 31 years. And one of HCD's comment was, well, not all the sites in your sites inventory are 31 years or older. And so as part of this revision, when we still had our consultant team, Veronica Tam and Associates, they re, essentially redid the methodology, reran the analysis, changed the 31-year to 30-year, ensured everything was in fact 30 years and older. And that produced a myriad of new sites in tandem with the other revisions to those variables, the net new units.
Okay. And then final question. Are there any cities in the state of California that have a certified housing element?
I think there's less than a dozen.
I think it's maybe higher than a dozen around the state, but in the, in the Southern California area, it's, it's extremely low.
Yeah.
I think there's only maybe two or three in San Diego County, if I can recall that correctly.
I think it's a little bit higher than that, but it's not the majority. And in SCAG, which is hundreds of cities, it's like six. So it's, it's very low.
But we're making progress.
I, I can kind of say, based on discussions and meetings that Veronica and I have had with our representative from HCD, that we are definitely on the right track. They are very, very happy with the progress we are making. They're, they're seeing a lot of cities kind of dragging their feet or, or, you know, being very resistant to some of the requirements and to pushing forward with their elements. And they have definitely seen that we are not doing that, that we are definitely moving forward deliberately on this. And we are concurrently also looking at and, and working on our rezoning effort for the East Valley Specific Plan, which is what we hang our hat on to an extent for those units in the, in the housing element. So we have established that type of relationship with our, with our rep from HCD, and she sees the, the work that we're, that we're doing for it. I, I would venture to say we're probably ahead of the curve, probably ahead of 80% of the other cities out there.
That's good to hear. Good job.
Though interestingly enough, I, I wonder if putting, as I have said several times, I think putting all of our eggs in the, the East Valley Specific Plan basket might be a little bit overreaching. But that's the way. We'll see what happens. Other questions, concerns, comments? Okay, so then I, so what we, what we can expect then is further review, et cetera. You guys are gonna continue, and then we'll see it again sometime in August with this final?
That would be the soonest you would potentially see it, based on the state requirement that HCD has to have it for 60 days before a jurisdiction can move to adopt those draft revisions. So again, we're having a voluntary 30-day public review period. It ends June 2nd. Theoretically, a member of the community would review that document. They can provide us with public comment. We would review those public comments. If there needs to be any changes or we receive direction to make any of changes based on those comments that would occur, then we'll submit it to HCD for their review. 60 days goes by. There is usually... goes by. There is usually communication that occurs in those 60 days, so you have an idea of whether there'll be comments or not. Um, and if they said everything was good to go, then we would move forward with adoption. It would come before Planning Commission for your recommendation to City Council, and then it would go to City Council for adoption.
Right. Okay, thank you. Um, just one footnote to data. I think is it like 10 out of the 18 jurisdictions in San Diego County have ordinances for inclusionary housing? It's just on a comparative basis, it seems like we are kind of behind the ball on that one.
More than half of the jurisdictions in San Diego have an inclusionary housing ordinance, and I know that San Diego County doesn't currently, but they are working on one.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. Uh, moving on to the next business item. Excuse me, just one question, actually. This is to Adam because we've now heard several times from the gentleman who was here, not from him specifically, but from his organization about essentially what strikes me as labor laws. And bringing that up here is we're not, there's no way that we can respond to that. Is that correct?
So I've heard of cities that have put local hire policies or programs in their housing elements. Um, that would be the only way we would be able to affect something that he along the lines of what he had been requesting or discussing. Um, beyond that, I I would defer to our attorney's office to see if there's anything else that, you know, that the gentleman's input would be would be affecting.
Yeah, because we have heard this several times throughout this Housing Element review, and I'm just if there's if there is something we can do, it would certainly be handy to know. Or if there's a way that we can participate and give any advice or or learn more about it if it's appropriate within our purview.
Well, that would be, I think, the point is there's always more you can learn. I don't know if there's any easy answers. Typically, any requirement to add, you know, a new and sorry, a requirement to add a requirement makes things harder, you know? It makes it more expensive, makes it more of a challenge, it limits your flexibility. There are other ways to do it, but they have an opportunity to come here and and, you know, say their piece, and we can consider it and, you know, make a determination whether you want to raise that issue or direct staff to look at it some more.
Okay, thanks. And thank you very much, Veronica. Appreciate it. It's a great presentation. Okay, moving on, 2022 to 2023 Planning Commission Work Plan. We remember this document?
We sure do. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Barbe. My name's Adam Finestone, City Planner. I think I've stated that a couple of times now. Um, I don't have a formal presentation, a PowerPoint or anything on this, but I did provide in our in your packet our the work plan from last year. It identifies tasks that were intended to be accomplished. It gives a status of those tasks. And then it and then the second attachment is an update to that work plan that kind of pushes forward a year. So it's intended to be kind of a two year plan and then updated on an annual basis. So it looks out two years, uh, looks at what policy work is going to be provided or or conducted and presented to the commission for consideration and deliberation, typically in an advisory role to City Council on most of the items that are policy work here. Um, we've made some progress on a few things over the course of the last year. I think there were five or six items that we did check off. I acknowledge that we did not get to a number of items that were on the list that were slated for approval or or consideration, adoption, et cetera, through uh by this time, basically by spring of 2022. Some of those have been, at this point, kind of backburnered because they are staff does not have the capacity to do to deal with them. Uh, some of them have been backburnered to an extent because other priorities have arisen. Um, for instance, last year at this time, we didn't think that we didn't really have SB 9 on our radar as a as a state, you know, statute that we would have to incorporate into our ordinances. That came about and all right, that kind of became priority over several other things. Um, so you'll see on the on the proposed work plan for 2223 that it's right up there at the top, primarily because we've been working through and we will be bringing something forward in the coming month or two on that. So um, there's some reprioritization here. There's some grouping of different items that makes sense when staff looks at them from a certain perspective. For instance, there are, I believe, probably four items. Um, numbers nine, 10, 11, and 12 that really can probably be looked at concurrently as one work effort. Uh, those are all related to uh to carbon reduction through electric vehicle or electric cooking appliances, alternatively fueled, uh, water heaters, EV parking ordinance, zero net energy, net zero energy breach ordinance, things of that sort that are really, we can look at them as a comprehensive effort, and it might delay one of them because the others were, you know, it might speed one up because the others were delayed. I don't know exactly, but doing something like that as a comprehensive measure and putting them together at one time period would really be helpful, both from an efficiency standpoint and a comprehensive comprehensivity, if that's a word, standpoint. But the document here in front of you is intended to be a starting point for a discussion. We'll look at this and and I'll take some notes and provide you can provide comments, ideas, thoughts, potential reprioritization that you might believe is appropriate, um, other ideas, things that may not be necessarily something that you think that you think is appropriate. Now, I do have to caveat this by stating that policy is driven and directed by council. So if there are any items on here that are not something that council has already authorized or that is within the it's been budgeted or funded, that may be something that would be that we'd be required to bring this back to council to get their blessing on, uh, similar to last year when we brought the green infrastructure plan, which had not been budgeted or or identified in their in council's um policies. And unfortunately, that was removed from the plan by council. But if that were something that were, that's an example of something that might need to be brought to council. The the hope is that we don't have to get there, but if we do, if that's what the commission here looks at and thinks is appropriate, that's a that's a role staff would play to bring that forward. So I'm going to open it up back to you, Chair, and you can start a discussion. I'll take some notes and we can look at the list here, so.
All right. And just for for our new commissioners, please note that at the beginning where it says education and then director's report, that was mentioned by us by our group when at the time when we first looked at this as being those two items as being important to us as a commission. So those were added there as a sort of a preface.
I apologize, Chairs, but I was late coming in, so I forgot to grab my package. So is there an extra copy that I can take a look at?
There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll open it up to comments, questions about the work plan or thoughts? Commissioner Barber?
Adam, my question is whether or not the vehicle mileage travel policy is going to be a part of our work plan in the in the future.
So there's there is not a any type of formal document that needs to be adopted. We adopted recently or not that not needs to be brought forward here. We adopted uh through staff a um an update to our traffic impact analysis guidelines, uh, and that included certain triggers that require an analysis based on VMT. Um, it's really, again, kind of a statistical, technical document that really doesn't have much in the way of policy that we would prepare. I know that we are also working with a consultant on a on a mitigation. You want to really briefly talk about that, Owen? It's a mitigation, alternative mitigation for VMT, I believe.
Yeah, we're just looking at at various mitigation uh programs and and policies. But um, yeah, I can't really speak to it at this point.
So it it'd basically be ways to offset your impacts for transportation and which creates then greenhouse gas emissions. It's a way to offset that for projects that would exceed the VMT threshold rather than having to do a full blown EIR and make findings of of overriding consideration on that. But it's not a document that is intended to be considered or brought before the the commission. It's transportation traffic is a isn't is a function of the engineering department, so not under necessarily the purview of this body. But the but the projects that will utilize it will be coming likely coming forward to the commission.
Other thoughts, questions, comments? Wow. Commissioner Wyler?
So with all the items that are are listed here, you know, as we go year after year, uh, it does take staff time and and effort and a certain number of these things are going to cost X number of dollars. Um, as a planning department or or even just staff for for community development, do you guys have enough staff to really implement these things? Because I know that you guys are really overwhelmed right now. And, you know, certainly setting these goals are 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 great. Um, but do you have enough staff and do you have enough funding to to try and make these things happen?
Sure. Uh, so these are aspirational goals to get this work done. It's something that we look at and we say, okay, these things should be done and based on certain policy documents, there's certain requirements or or mid implementation measures in the Climate Action Plan and the Housing Element, et cetera, that we need to keep on our radar and keep them front and center. Whether this work gets accomplished or not is a function of of capacity, and that is a reality. You so you did to an extent there, Commissioner Wyler, hit it on the head. We've got certain issues that we need to get through, and this is in addition to private development projects and entitlement work that comes through. As staff, we are constantly reprioritizing, and I think that's reflected here. As you see, it's significantly different, I think, than what was in the than the order of the list last year. But um, we lay out what we believe would be achievable with the adequate capacity, which we acknowledge that we probably don't have at this point.
But um, you guys did have the opportunity to hire one or one or two more planners recently and and is but that may or may not be enough.
So uh, last fiscal year, we added one position, so an additional full time employee to our to our roster, let's say. Veronica Maronis filled that slot and has been doing a great job. Uh, over the last year, though, we've had a lot of attrition. I think we've had at least four, maybe five planners leave. We've brought in a couple new ones. So right now, we're we're operating at 80% capacity. So we're, you know, still down two bodies. We were at 70% for a good part of the last year.
But you do have funding and budget, I mean, you have budget to
For those positions, correct. Yep. And hopefully that'll, I'm not going to say that will would allow us to achieve everything on this list, but it would definitely allow us to to achieve a lot more.
Well, good. Well, it's I mean, it's nice to hear, and I know you're up against a lot. And and certainly for myself and I'm sure the other commissioners, we really do appreciate all the effort that you guys have put forth. I I think you guys are doing a really great job. So thank you.
Yeah, I would agree that I'm assuming that you all prioritize this based on what what you all think you can do. But it also does include items that that we that will come to us for review. So I think that it all makes makes a lot of sense. My only question would be, why would you not include some of the education and training activities in here as sort of a work item? I'm just curious because I noticed you put out the link for training and
Sure. Right. And and I'll discuss that a little bit. But um, you know, they just were were part of the section one of that of the table from last year, and I didn't do anything with it to modify it. Um, but it it's included as kind of an ongoing process, ongoing effort that's not a specific um policy action that you would be looking at.
Not a policy action, but sort of a supporting action as as for the commission?
Mm hmm.
Okay. Other?
Question I have, just in a matter of understanding how this works, a couple constraints. One is obviously I see the column here for council to authorize the work plan. And then there's the issue of of planning's time and and resources as well. So are we talking about this to figure out what we're going to do one time, set in a plan and moving forward? Or do we occasionally modify this from a planning commission standpoint in saying, hey, you know, this would be good to add? Are we kind of taking that idea off the table? Or is that an option that we do as well?
No, I think we can certainly consider that. Any any ideas or or projects that the commission itself would propose, whether or not staff has got would have to respond as to whether or not they have the wherewithal to support as as the supporting entity for the Planning Commission. And oftentimes, that might be the constraining factor. I mean, they've already outlined so many things, of course, that that we are obligated to do by either law or or policy needs, et cetera. So
When you go to council to get this, is that a one time shot or you just go whenever it's needed?
So this this document really came about last year. It was the first time we've done it. So this is the first update to it, and we do anticipate it to be annual. Um, I don't necessarily foresee taking the time to go through this process again rather than working on the projects that are on it on more than annual basis. Um, but I do I do see the value in keeping, you know, keeping an eye on this. There may be things that aren't even on this sheet that just pop like, oh, wait, we got to deal with that, right? So this is this is definitely not a checklist of go straight down it and do them in this order. But um, it it is a dynamic document, right? It it can change over time, and next year, we'll look at it again. Um, I think the intent at this point, based on timing, is that it would cover a fiscal year, really. So every fiscal year, we'll we'll look at it in the spring so that it would be kind of appropriate, applicable to start utilizing as a guide document guidance document for this body and for Planning Division staff in new fiscal year.
But if there are things that you would like to consider at this point, we could certainly bring those up now if if there are additions or
Thank you. I'm I'm good for now.
Okay.
So I I didn't have a comment, but I'd like to follow up on that. So um, I think I was one of the people that really pushed for this last year, and and I had two two reasons that might or might not have been commented on already. Um, one was so the Planning Commission could understand the workload that staff has and what kind of workload we were going to have, you know, during the course of the year. And and secondarily, as a communication tool between the Planning Commission and the City Council, to make sure we were on the same page, that if we want if we like, like they mentioned this plan that the City Council squashed. So so there was no ambiguity, you know, we thought it's a good idea. Council said, no, don't do it. Okay, so we don't have to worry about that anymore. We don't have to argue about it or whatever. So to just to have that clear communication, I thought was important, too. And then and then um, the staff ended up agreeing and saying, yeah, this is a good, this is a good planning tool.
Planning to plant.
Yeah, I could I could agree with that, Commissioner Paul. This is really something that helps us as staff see what's on our radar and on on our plates as policy work in the in the, you know, coming year or two. So it it definitely has been a helpful tool, whether it be for the commission's benefit or for staff, so.
Okay. Any other thoughts, comments, questions? No. Now, so there's no action tied to this, as I understand it, we're simply
So the the intent that I had was to get comments and considerations, any input, and then bring this back at a future meeting for a vote, similar to what we did last time.
Okay.
If there is, it's not a, it's not a, there's been no recommendation to to request a vote or approval, et cetera, for this meeting. So that'll come back to you at the next the next Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Let's see, next. Oral communications. I think we've been there, done that? Yeah. Selection of Chair and Vice Chair. It has been such a pleasure to serve you all. Let's see. We have a process, of course, that Stan did last year. So um, I'm just going to review the process with you first, and then we can move to the actual selection. Um, so what I will do, let me just read this first part here that was provided to me. The commission will now move forward with appointing a Chair and a Vice Chair for the next year pursuant to the commission's bylaws. The commission appoints a Chair and Vice Chair annually in April of each year. The Chair and Vice Chair will begin serving their terms immediately after this process has been completed. So we'll first move towards the appointment of the Chair. And I'll ask for nominations. And if you are nominated, but you haven't spoken, but you will, I'll confirm with you that you actually want to be nominated. And I'll read the list of the nominations. And then we'll ask each to speak briefly about their qualifications and interest in the in being a Chair or not. You have the option to do that. Then I'll call for an emotion, call for a motion to to appoint one of the members, one of the nominees for Chair, and I'll let him call for a second. And then if the call, if the vote is majority, that person will be the Chair. And if it's not a majority, if there's no majority reached, then we'll move on to the next person. Is that right? Gary? Thank you. Thank you. And then we'll go through essentially the same process for the vice chair, but we'll do the chair first. So first of all, I'd like to ask for nominations for Chair of the Planning Commission.
Yeah, so I would like my turn at the, at the apple. I would nominate myself.
Okay. Other nominations?
How about Commissioner Wyler?
Yeah, I would accept that.
Okay. All right. Other nominations?
I'd like to re-nominate the chair, current chair.
Me, okay. I accept. That's three, one, two, three. Anybody else? No? Okay. So we have Commissioner Paul, Commissioner Wyler and Commissioner, myself, Commissioner Barbay. We can speak, speak to your qualifications and interests.
Sure. And, and thank you, Commissioner Spear, for the nomination. I appreciate that. I, I would like to be Chair once again. I was Chair back right before Chair Barbay. I led the commission through a couple of the larger projects, one being Polymer Heights and then also the Climate Action Plan. Both of those had a lot of robust discussion and attendance by the, by the citizens, especially on Polymer Heights. So I thought that I, I did well in keeping the, the discussion moving along, keeping the, the, the commission moving along, keeping the speakers kind of to their three-minute mark and I would like to continue, you know, in that role once again and I'd appreciate your vote.
Commissioner Paul?
So I've served under both, both chairs, Chair Wyler and the present chair and, and I guess I'm, I'm serious when I say I'd just like my bite at the apple and my, my try at it. Thanks.
Great. And in my case, I've served for Chair as the past year. I've gotten positive feedback from colleagues as well as city staff, as well as the public on my performance. I've managed and facilitated collaborative processes and discussions throughout my, my federal career, actually, particularly, I was working with Commerce and managing state federal partnerships in coastal resource development where we really took time to manage and think about conservation versus development, as well as thinking about traditional uses of waterfront areas. So I had a lot of, a lot of time in that, in that job, which really actually set me up well for this one, I think. I think a key element in all of these processes is, is participation and I would hope that most folks would think that I actually solicited input from all, as well as the public. I, my interests are, I'm really interested in the Climate Action Plan, I have particular interest in food security and access and anticipate working much more closely with the city and furthering some of these climate action parameters and, and measures and strategies. I also believe very strongly in inclusionary housing and I think hopefully we'll, we'll get there and, and also interested in the public engagement process and how we might be able to improve that, as well as interaction with city council on a couple of different levels over time. So those are some of the things I'd like to work on and I'd like to work with you all into the future. So, given that, is there a motion to appoint a chair?
I'm not sure how that would work, but I would move to appoint myself. I don't know if it works that way or.
It's weird, but it works. Is there a second? Okay. Commissioner Spear seconds the nomination. So we should vote then. Roll call. Chair Barbay?
Uh, nay.
Commissioner Barber?
With respect, I'm familiar with only one commissioner, so there's only one commissioner I could actually personally vote for, she smiles at me, so I'll be voting that.
Commissioner Dome?
Nay.
Commissioner McCarroll?
Nay.
Commissioner Paul?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Spear?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wyler?
Yes.
It is two, two, five, to deny. So there's no majority there? Okay. Is there another nomination?
Already expressed my familiarity with Commissioner Barbara as the only person that I really have any experience with and I understand her public support and her personal interests, I'll nominate Chairman Barbara to continue.
And is there a second?
I would second.
Okay, roll call. Chair Barbay? Yes. Commissioner Barber?
Yes.
Commissioner Dome?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarroll? Commissioner Paul?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Spear?
No.
Commissioner Wyler?
No.
Okay, the vote is four, two, three. To appoint, I think. Oh, that's, so that's me? Okay. So I was going to say congratulations to whoever got it. I guess congratulations to me. Thank you so much for your support, I really appreciate it and I look forward to working with all of you over the next year in this capacity. Thank you. Okay. Now we move to Vice Chair. Are there nominations for the Vice Chair?
Sure, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Spear.
Is there a second? Oh, I'm sorry, we're not voting yet. Wait a minute. I just got confused. It's up to me, what, to ask for a second?
No, if you want to follow the same process as you did for the Chair or just next one.
No, I think we should follow the same process. Is there a second for?
You don't need a second at this point.
You don't? Okay. Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, I'm just getting all the nominati, I apologize, I apologize, getting all confused. Nominations, so we have that, we have Mr. Spear. Is there, are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Paul.
Okay. I would second that. So we have Paul. Any other nominations? No. Okay. Roll call on.
So now we need a motion.
Oh, now I need a motion, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to, for Mr. Paul? I would say yes.
Just so we're clear, this is where we decide who votes first, who gets the vote first. So that's a separate motion. Does that make sense?
That's a separate motion.
You have two people, two nominees.
Right.
So somebody, anybody who made a motion to propose one of those two.
Oh, okay. All right.
Including you.
Right.
I'll make a motion for Commissioner Paul, let's get him closer to the apple.
Okay. And I second that? If I don't need the second.
You need a second.
Right, so we have a second. Okay. Chair Barbay?
Yes.
Commissioner Barber?
Yes.
Commissioner Dome?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarroll?
Yes.
Commissioner Paul?
Yes.
Commissioner Spear?
I'll say no.
And Commissioner Wyler?
No.
Okay. Vote is five to two. Five to two, congratulations to Mr. Paul, Commissioner Paul, Vice Chair. Thank you. Okay, so the next business item is planning commissioners having general comments or items for the future or anything at all that you would like to provide for the good of the order.
I just wanted to say one thing, you know, in support of the Climate Action Plan, Escondido joined the Clean Energy Alliance and I just got appointed to the Citizens Advisory Committee, so I'm one of the two Escondido representatives on that, on that committee. So I just wanted to mention that.
That's really excellent. Commissioner Wyler?
Yeah, you know, I would like to have an item brought back for our discussion and that would be a change to our bylaws. And, and we did this last year, it could have been the year before now, about changing the, the time that we meet. So I wanted to at least bring that up now so we could schedule it for the agenda because we really can't talk about it now, but at least get it on a future agenda so we can have that discussion once again.
That, that's great, particularly given we have new members, so that's inappropriate.
And then the only other thing is welcome new members. It'll be great to work with all of you again. Congratulations on the Chair and the Vice Chair.
Thank you.
And look forward to the new year.
Great.
I would like to thank the commissioners for giving the three of us such a warm welcome. I think all three of us appreciate it very much.
Great. Great, thank you. Thank you so much. Other thoughts, questions, anything for the good of the order? I just wanted to see. One of the items forwarded to us was the single-use plastics ordinances from across the board, right? Like in other jurisdictions, was that correct? It was table, was that provided to us from, I think that was actually a, a external person?
That was, I'm trying to recall, that wasn't in the past couple days and a lot's happened since then.
Well, I just wanted to point out simply that I thought that was a really helpful sort of look at who's doing what in plastics and the reduction of plastics across the county and that was really, at least around this quarter, so that was helpful. And I really encourage folks to look at it because I think that we, we may be, well be looking at something like that into the future. That was, I think, that and you're going to talk about the training? Okay.
Yep. So.
Onto the Director's Report. And Adam, before we start that, you had, we had talked about neighborhood meetings and then it looks like you have now taken that off the agenda.
So I think there might have been a little confusion as far as what neighborhood meetings on the agenda we're referring to in the past and this was, goes back a number of years. There were times where city staff would meet with neighborhoods regarding development projects that are going on in their, in their area. It's not with, it's not considering, you know, community action groups or, or community advisory groups or neighborhood groups or things of that sort, it's planning-specific projects. For instance, if we had a scoping meeting on an environmental impact report or if we had a neighborhood meeting to discuss a project that's coming to, you know, to the South Center City area, it's really intended to be a disclosure source for when the Planning Division staff will be out in the public discussing an entitlement project or a policy document, not necessarily just neighborhood meetings for various groups of their own. So I, I did remove it from the list for that reason, but if and when we do have those meetings again moving forward into the future, it will be put back on there.
Right, I was thinking specifically of when Mike Strong, for example, met with communities around the ACIS, the, I mean, the study that was done. For example.
Right, right.
Okay. Please.
Thank you. So there are a couple things that I wanted to brief the commission on or, or kind of go into a little more detail. I sent an email out earlier this week, maybe over the weekend regarding the planning commissioner training that Institute for Local Governments puts on. I'm not familiar with the training itself, but I, but they're a well-respected organization. It is on June 17th down at the Central Library downtown, downtown San Diego. It's a free seminar, regardless if it was free or not, the, the city would cover that expense. If you desire to go, we'll reimburse you for your gas and parking or transit, however you might desire to get down there, but please let me know and we can coordinate to get you guys signed up. You can email me individually and, and we can get into that. The other thing that the Institute Local Government, for Local Government, put together is a Planning Commissioners Handbook, which I sent you that link as well, a lot of great information in there. Couple other items just to touch base on. One, I know that we've kind of, as we've gotten back to in-person meetings, we've not really created a consistent policy on hard copy packets, hard copy plans, electronic versions, et cetera. I know that various individual commissioners have asked for them, but I want to get some consistency for moving forward. If, what I would like to ask and please email me offline, if you want a hard copy packet on a regular basis, let me know. If the link to the document or an emailed copy of the, of the plan is fine as, in your eyes, let me know. And then if there's a specific item, you know, maybe if we, when we bring the housing element forward, maybe you want the full, full document on that, someone of that sort, we can deal with that on a case-by-case basis. But I just want to get a list of how many people we need to be providing doc, hard copies to, how many people are comfortable with just the electronic version. And then the other wrinkle to it is when we have projects, entitlement projects with hard copy plans, we no longer at this point are receiving large-scale plans from our applicants, we're doing everything virtually or electronically. So we receive, you know, files. We don't have or prepare or provide hard copy plans even to ourselves, much less to the commission, so. So you, even if we do have packets that you want a hard copy delivered, you're not going to be receiving hard copy plans. Those will be available, obviously, online for you to view and, and the like, but just touch base with me, ping me offline or, you know, email me, let me know what your, what your preferred method for receiving the, the materials are. We also in the past used to drive around and deliver the packets because they did have those large sets of plans in there and putting them in the mail was not realistic. At this point, the intent would be, we'll send everyone a link to it and then we'll put a copy of the actual, of the actual report in the mail to you if you want that, so. Like I said, let me know, let me know what works on your end. And then the last item, there were a couple other things on the, in the bylaws that staff has noticed, so we were going to bring those forward as well for other modifications that we think might be appropriate. Some, you know, an example, clear up the, how do we vote on a commi, on a Chair and Vice Chair issue that's in there, so. So that's something that we'll be, we'll be grouping in with discussion, further discussion from what Chair, sorry, from what former Chair, Commissioner Wyler had, had mentioned. So next, next meeting will be on the 14th of, of June, there's not going to be a meeting on the 24th of this month. We'll be bringing back the, the work plan for a formal endorsement. We'll be bringing likely the bylaw discussion and the SB nine ordinance. That concludes my comments.
Thank you very much. And given that, this meeting is now adjourned.